All right, we'll call the meeting to order and ask our one visitor to join us in the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome to our June meeting. You probably got an agenda. They were on the table in back of you there. And it was posted as it's supposed to be at the building entrance door and on our website. The meeting is live streaming on YouTube, will be posted immediately. And the recording will also be available through the township website. Written minutes are available after they're approved by the board. We'll have two opportunities for public comment. We ask if you do choose to comment that you step up to the microphone, speak pretty strongly into it and give us your name and address. If at any time you can't hear us, let us know. Sometimes the sound is better than at other times. And with that, we'll do self-introduction of the board members.
Dave Rose.
Jeff Rogers.
Art Rutledge.
Bob Brown.
Jeff Rattle.
And to my left is Todd Ziegler, the Township Manager. Ryan W., because I'm gonna stumble on his last name, who will be sitting in Todd's seat in a couple of years. So he is with our outside maintenance group, but being well groomed to become our Township Manager.
We'll get a phonetic pronunciation set up for you going forward.
Just say it real fast.
Put it in my phone and I'll just.
Yep, there you go.
Record that. And we have excused Wendy Brown, our recording secretary. Usually joins us by YouTube, but is not feeling so well this morning. This morning, this afternoon, evening. And we have excused him, Bup, our solicitor, from this meeting as well. So with that, will we return to our agenda? First item is.
Minutes?
Our minutes, yes, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from May seventh.
Second. Ooh, tie goes to the runner.
Yeah.
The older.
I'll let Todd break the tie. I think I might have heard Jeff just a fraction of a second sooner.
He's sitting closer to you, but that's all right.
That's probably right. Sound travels faster. All right, we have a motion and a second to accept the meeting minutes. Are there questions or comments before we vote? I'll call for the vote to approve the minutes.
Aye.
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 Five votes to the affirmative, the minutes are approved. We'll move on to the Treasurers' Report. Are there questions anybody has or Todd, anything you want to highlight on the Treasurers' Report?
I have nothing in particular now.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I do notice about seventy-one hundred dollars in interest, about five hundred in fines, seventy dollars in burn permits, and actually a hundred fifty dollars in pavilion rentals, which helps us fund some things there. And it's always nice to see five hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars more in revenue than expenses, so.
That is also good fiscal responsibility.
And with that, we'll vote on the motions on the floor to approve the Treasurers' Report.
Aye.
Todd, I have a question for you. What's the interest rate again on the loan?
For the building, it's two point six two.
Two point six two.
That we pay, right? That's what you're asking.
Right.
Yep.
Two point six two. Aye.
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 Five votes to the affirmative. We have accepted the Treasurers' Report. This is the first opportunity for public comment. If you want to speak, okay. All right, we'll move forward under ordinances and resolutions. You have in front of you the short-term zoning amendment. Todd, there's two parts to this. The first part, which is a zoning ordinance amendment, we would be looking to approve to forward to York County Planning Commission for comment. The second part on licensing doesn't need to go to them, is that?
Correct. They're not required to review and give comment or anything because it's not zoning or subdivision land development. But I'm gonna send it along because it kind of references.
Yep, I think that makes sense. So this was the work of a committee. I would thank those people. It was Todd, myself. It was Jeff Reno, it was Keith Hunnings. I guess we had Trish Schuster. I think that was the committee.
Ben Butler.
Yeah.
Ben Butler?
Ben Butler.
That's right, right. So.
To clarify, we're voting on sending the zoning ordinance to the York County.
That's correct. Not on approving it or etc., because we'll have to have a public hearing and all that too.
Very good. The licensing though, are we approving that today? It's gonna go with it?
Right.
And then that'll be voted on as well once it comes back?
Right. We'll do it all at once when it comes back.
Thank you.
Any, any questions, comments? Call for the vote to.
Oh, can I make a motion?
Yep.
Yeah.
I guess we do need a motion.
I make a motion to send the short-term lodging zoning ordinance on to York County for comment.
Second.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second to send the short-term lodging zoning order amendment forward to York County Planning Commission for comments. Questions before we vote? Call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Five votes to the affirmative. We'll be sending that along to York County. Next up is under, I guess, subdivision and land development. We have the Mark and Sarah Glick. I guess we have two parts to this. The first is to look at modification requests. The second is to look at preliminary final division plan. Todd, you want to kind of walk us quickly through it?
Yeah, I.
Is that what you're here for too? Okay, good.
Did you want to speak here?
Oh, I was just doing a twenty seven. I'm Scott Gunnett from Henry Land Services here on behalf of the Glicks.
Okay, thank you. You might, you can stay there in case we have a question. I think it's pretty.
Yeah.
Standard, but.
I don't have to put on the screen. Everyone has a copy of the plan. Probably the best one is the second change with the green shading. That's page three of three, thank you. Second printed sheet. And I'm gonna refer to the plot on your left. Of course, you see Hayntown Road running through the two green shaded areas. And you see the light and strike there. It looks like capital letter Z.
Right.
And then you can see the three corner pins on that. I'm gonna call it, for the lack of a better term, looking at it, I'm gonna call it the north side of Hayntown as we're looking at it here on paper. But just that small triangular piece belongs to the property that's actually on Valley Road. And it's gonna be transferred and sold to Glick, who owns everything on the north side. So the property is there many years before the road came through, of course. And so it's really just cleaning up lot lines, so it doesn't require the use of any development.
Okay. And so the mod.
Whose property is it currently?
It's going to go to Glick.
Yeah.
And it's coming from MEO. There on the corner, well, there the second one in.
Twenty-one oh two Valley Road.
Okay.
I think right there in the corner used to be a Wilson.
Well, the Wilson used to be what Glick owns, right?
Yeah, but I was thinking their son lived there in the corner lot.
Oh, okay.
But anyway, yeah, if you're heading toward Glen Rock and you pass through Hayntown, cross over Hayntown Road, it's the second home on the right. It kind of loops around the back there.
Okay.
And we're looking at just one modification request, which is basically not require any improvements to the existing local road basis. It makes no sense to do it.
There's no construction proposed. Nothing's gonna change other than on paper or deed that belongs to Glicks.
Staff and Planning Commission both.
Staff recommend it be approved. Planning Commission recommend be approved. The motion by the Township Planning Commission is that be approved the condition or standard condition.
Right, on the.
Yeah, the July.
C S Davidson letter of July twenty-ninth.
July twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-four. C S D comment letter. And that all those items be addressed. It's just a couple administrative things. And then the second item is that before it's recorded, that we see a copy of the draft deeds correcting that with this swap of land, so.
What's the size of the parcel this being transferred?
What they're transferring?
Yeah, it's private.
What's transferring is for gross is point two-two-four acres. Net is point one-two-seven.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second.
Does that need to be contingent upon the C S Davidson?
Well, yeah, contingent upon everything being completed.
If I could ask for clarifications, that also include the modification request?
Yes.
As well as the plan?
Yes.
On the condition of the C S Davidson letter and the draft?
Yes.
All right.
Good job.
So to clarify, we're voting on.
We got there. It took us a little bit.
We're voting on both at the same time?
The modification and the approval?
Based on that.
For the land transfer.
Okay, I just want to make sure I understood the motion.
That was my understanding.
I actually didn't look at what's in the meeting, you know, the agenda.
So we have a motion that we would approve the modification request and the preliminary final subdivision plan for transfer of the property to Glick. And as long as all the conditions of the C S Davidson July twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-four letter are satisfied.
Correct. And the township first seats the draft deeds rewriting the property descriptions before recording.
Okay, and so that's.
I understood that to be in Jeff's motion, I'm sorry.
And the draft and draft deeds as well have to be satisfied. Okay, questions? Call for vote.
Aye.
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 Five votes to the affirmative. You're good to go.
Thank you very much.
Enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you. Enjoy the rest of the evening.
Tell your mother hello. His mother is manager down at Windsor.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so that brings us to Phantom Fireworks. And this would be for approval of the preliminary final subdivision plan.
Yeah.
There's no one here, so I guess we'll let you walk us through that one.
Yeah, and just for the record, I was contacted by Jason Brenneman, who's with James R. Holly and Associates, and he asked if I thought it was necessary. And I didn't anticipate any question. If we do, we'll get answers. But we've been through this one enough times. I think we're pretty much there. Of course, we did all the modifications. So again, staff recommends approval as well as the Township Planning Commission on two conditions. First, the C S Davidson review letter dated March twenty-fourth of twenty-five.
Noted.
And that the township reviews and agrees to the traffic flow agreement during the peak sales period.
The overflow area, X and L.
Questions from anybody or a motion?
I make a motion to approve the preliminary final subdivision plan contingent upon the March twenty-fourth of twenty-twenty-five C S Davidson letter as well as agreement for the overflow parking situation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Is that a second?
It was.
Okay, good. All right, so we have a motion and a second that we approve the plan on the appropriate condition. Questions before we vote? Let's vote.
Aye.
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 Five votes to the affirmative. We have approved, so approved.
You guys ever feel like a pirate with all these?
What's that?
You guys ever feel like a pirate with all these eyes?
That's R, R.
I'm sorry. Don't mind me. I didn't get much sleep last night.
All right, that moves us to reports. So the first one is the Miners' Report. Anything you want to point out or Todd?
It's a thick one this month, Todd. You must've been busy.
Just a couple of things. As far as the written report, I think that's all pretty self-explanatory. I did want to just bring you up to date on two things that I don't have on the written report. The Miller Park Land Acquisition, C S Davidson has completed the survey work. So now they're beginning to plan perhaps for the subdivision. So we'll probably see that for the board probably. I don't know if it'll be two, but shouldn't be done more than three months from now for the board to take final action on that. And then the other thing is that I learned, and timing is on our side. When Hayntown Park was developed back in nineteen, I think it was seventy, seventy-nine? Nineteen eighty, somewhere around there. It was developed, it was the ball field that sat here, the soccer field, you know, the pavilion, whatever. And that was through a grant, Land and Water Conservation Fund, which is through the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Services. And their requirement is that that remains perpetual as a park. I had no idea that that was a grant that developed this field back there, which part of our complex now sits upon. So what we have to do is. We're okay. I'm not concerned about it.
Got to renovate your office?
No.
Smaller. Make it smaller, right?
I'm sorry, continue, Todd.
What they require in situations like that, and it comes up, but they require you to have replacement of land.
Oh.
So I already talked to the folks up at DCNR, who handle the Land and Water Conservation Fund grants. And we're gonna be able to work it that the thirteen and a half acres is gonna cover what we took away from here.
Wonderful.
So we'll be okay, but you're gonna, there might be some action we have to take a month or two down the road, but.
Yeah, we didn't really.
I never knew that.
I didn't either.
We didn't really take that much away.
No, no. I think it worked out.
Actually, it took the ball field away.
Yeah.
But you could still put a small ball field out there if you had to.
Well, what they're doing, what they're going to do, I think it works out to about two acres. Around two acres. The ball field itself, you're right, wasn't a lot. But what they're recommending we do, and I think it makes sense, in the agreement from seventy-nine or eighty, whenever it was, they actually have a plot plan showing the area defined, what's to be perpetually preserved. And that includes what we now has is stormwater swale. We have a stormwater swale as well. So they're suggesting we take that out.
The stormwater swale?
Take, not take it physically out, but take that out of the perpetual agreement for this property.
Well, yeah.
So that's why it works out to two acres.
Oh, okay.
That's why it's a little more. So that way, if we ever need to do any work down through there, we can do it without any issues.
Yeah, well, this will be perpetually too, so we didn't really take anything away. We just transformed it a little bit.
Yeah, that worked, that worked out well for us. And it was actually brought to our attention by Ann Yost, who's doing our parks.
I was wondering who brought that up.
Well, she wasn't even quite aware, she wasn't even aware of it until she was up at a conference. I don't know what conference it was, but anyway, DCNR was there and it was for Parks People and all that. And DCNR brought it up to her attention because they knew that she was working on a project for us. So Ann got in touch with us, made the connections and stuff, but it's all gonna work out fine.
So what if you, what if you couldn't reverse it? Do you have to give the money back or?
It would be that, but they would push you more for anything. They're gonna make you buy land.
I was gonna say, they probably push us to buy.
Push us to buy land to replace it.
So, so we're okay?
But because we haven't purchased that yet, we can apply this acreage to what we're buying.
So we just may have to do a little bit of paperwork along the way.
Just wanted to make you aware of that.
Never knew that.
Interesting.
Yeah. Learn something new all the time, isn't it?
I think it's good to note that Mike, Ryan, and Todd did attend a full-day workshop on traffic calming. I think that was a good use of time since that comes up at times. So I appreciate that you were able to do that. And I think that's all I have.
By the way, Todd.
Yeah.
Have you heard anything when they're doing West Clearview?
We have not heard anything.
Because they've got the sign up about five nineteen, they were closing it.
They got, they paid them there today. They were tearing it up today.
Five nineteen, I'm talking about West Clearview, down at the bridge in Slayslan.
Oh, okay.
I was just wondering if you heard anything.
They haven't given us any dates.
Is that a state?
That's state.
Road, okay.
But they were down there doing core bores and so forth. And they, they had the sign, they've had the signs up that they were closing five nineteen.
No, we have not had any update.
Oh, okay.
Just curious, you had an ad review meeting. Do most of the committee members show up when you have those?
Yes.
Good.
Those are.
I know you were on it, so figured you would be. Just wondered if the others did. And also, you attached a map here of the primary racks used by the Amish.
Pretty accurate.
Yeah, and that was developed, they may use other roads, but I went out and met with almost all of them at their residence. And they asked them, so that information is coming from the Amish community itself.
Yeah, that's good.
And I asked them not to tell me every road they traveled, just those that they traveled most often.
I guess somebody hits all of them.
I'll tell you what, I was at a car show on Sunday, and I've never seen so many horse and buggies as I've seen that day.
Around this area?
Glenville.
Huh.
Yeah.
I couldn't believe how many are out there. Is there that many out in the Glenville area?
Yeah, because that's Kador's Township.
Yeah.
What day was that?
Where's Manheim?
Glenville.
What day?
Sunday. Well, it was their church.
They were all going to church.
Right. But I mean.
Three, four years ago, Kador's Township was the, I call it the hub.
Okay.
And at that point in time, I think Keith told me they had twenty-three or twenty-four families in just Kador's Township.
I bet I seen twenty horse and buggies that day.
Now, I had, I'm just, as you know, just over the line in North Kador's.
Yeah.
And there's an Amish farm directly across the road from me. And he said that, he called it in this, I think he referred to it as the outskirts of, you know, this general area, but he says about a hundred families now over here.
Oh, wow.
A hundred.
Between Lake Hopewell and Kador's and Shrewsbury. Springfield.
Oh, okay.
Manheim.
Geez.
North Kador's has quite a few.
Will be a little Lancaster city.
The thing is, the horses don't like it over here as much as they do Lancaster.
The hills.
There's hills here.
Yeah, that's true. Lancaster's pretty flat.
Everyone I met was very cooperative. They were pleased to know that we were interested in their travel and their safety and everything, so. I explained to them that this is through York County Planning Commission.
Well, good. Anything else, Todd?
That's all I have.
Okay. Any questions for Todd? So we move on. We have nothing from the solicitor. That's a good thing when we don't have him involved in anything. You have the zoning.
That's a rule somewhere, never involve lawyers.
Yeah.
I heard that once.
It's a good rule. Zoning officer codes enforcement and sewage enforcement reports in front of you. Questions or anything Todd wants to emphasize?
The only thing I want to mention is, you know, this is a relatively new software package that we're using. So in the violation section here where it says open, we still have a little cleaning up to do in that area, so you'll, hopefully next month, you'll start seeing a little more precise report. More with specific dates and what the actions were. And I think there's some on here, in fact, I know there are, there are some that have, are closed, but just haven't been closed in the system. So we're gonna go through that really well this month and try to make that a little cleaner and clearer.
Okay. Questions for Todd?
Just want to hear if somebody has their septic pump and they don't pay the fine. Does that fine add up?
That actually, if you have your, if you don't pump your septic tank, and we have to take you to District Court, that is actually a criminal complaint. That's not a civil complaint. So if it's a criminal complaint and you don't do anything about it and you get pulled over for anything, it's gonna show up as you have an outstanding.
Do not pass go.
Yeah.
Do not collect two hundred dollars.
Who determines that's a criminal offense? Us or the county, state?
State statute.
Okay, so, so the state says you don't pump it, that's your criminal. Interesting.
We get to pick how frequently it's pumped, though, correct?
We didn't know that, or we could've really told that guy.
That's on us. The frequency of the pumping, we determine.
That's correct, right.
But it has to be pumped.
But any violations is driven, yeah.
Has to be pumped every four years? Is that the minimum? Okay, so if you pump it every two years, then it just keeps rolling forward and you're always safe?
No. The way our ordinance is written, it has to be every four years. And we have a district map.
District.
So each of those districts has the due by, say, December thirty-one of twenty-five. That you're due. You can have the calendar year prior and that will meet that requirement. But if you do it in twenty-three, two years ago, that doesn't meet the ordinance's requirements.
Does, if you have it done in twenty-five, does that?
Now, if you haven't done it in twenty-five,
Yeah.
and it's due December thirty-one of twenty-five, you're good. But let's say you pump it then in twenty-seven. Four years does not begin in twenty-seven. The district you're in will always be four years. So say District One is not, is two thousand twenty-five is when it's due. You can pump it every year if you want. It doesn't start. So every one of District One is the same due date.
Right.
Every property doesn't have.
So you can do it before that, but you still have to do it on the due date.
Right. But you can do it every three years. You know, if you do it the year prior to the year that it's due, which would work out, you know, roughly every three. You get on that schedule, it's still gonna be every four years.
So if you, in three years, you'd have to do it the next year.
Well, personal question, example. Last, we have a septic system that has an aerator on it, okay, for oxygenated, whatever. And I had it done in January of twenty-four.
Okay.
Right. So, which I think was after the last requirement date anyhow. So now, you know, we like to have our system inspected, but it used to be, there was a guy, a service that would come out twice a year for like a hundred and fifty bucks. And that guy got sick and went away, so now they have a new service, but it's like three hundred and fifty dollars for them to come look at it once a year. And so it's three hundred and twenty-five dollars just to have it pumped. So I'm gonna have it pumped and I'll just observe it. You know, the aerator and there's a filter basket, make sure that's clean. But I'll probably do that every year and a half. So that's why I was asking, when does this four-year thing reset?
It resets, like if you're District One is, say, due in December twenty-five. So if you do in twenty-five, your pumping done between January one of twenty-four and December thirty-one of twenty-five, it's a two-year window.
Okay.
Meets the requirements.
So I'm gonna, I've already scheduled them to come out in like sometime in July, I think.
Okay.
Of this year.
But do you know when you're due next?
No, that's why I'm asking you.
Yeah, I'd have to look at the district map. I don't have that in front of me.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the key. I mean, you can do it as many times as you want in between.
Okay.
The key is, the year that you're due, it has to be pumped that year or the calendar year prior to meet the ordinance.
Okay, oh, okay. Year or prior year. Okay, I can live with that.
Yeah.
And I guess I can look it up somewhere what District One is?
Yeah, or even, it's gonna be easier if you call in here, we can.
Okay.
Megan or Wendy, they can just pull, they have it on, they can pull it up real quick and tell you.
Gotcha.
Like that.
Okay.
You know, what district you're in. And they can tell you when it's due.
Okay.
Anything else on that report? Okay, we move to the maintenance report. Any comments, Todd, for you or Ryan want to make? Before we get to the speed study?
Yeah, we'll get to that. As far as the report itself, though, it parks pretty much mowing grass and not too much dry weather would do anything else.
When's the micro-surfacing supposed to be done?
They haven't scheduled that yet.
Because I know we voted on the award last, last month.
Yeah, let me pull up here the speed study report, and I'd like to share that.
And for all of us that got the email about resurfacing Magnolia, that is supposed to start on Monday, weather, I'm ready.
Yeah, that's actually a three-day process. So that's where the challenge was, as you know, you, it rained three, four days. You might have a day or two of dry weather and it starts raining again. They actually need three days because day one, they'll go down, actually excavate, they'll do the salt cutting, straighten things up, excavate all the crusher waste and everything and put in a little better stone for the stone base. Day two, they'll come in and they'll lay the, uh, base, asphalt base. And then day three, they'll come back and place the final layer of course of asphalt. So it'll take three days.
And it.
And it will be closed those three days.
Oh, is that to close it then? Which is no problem because they just go around.
Right.
Well, Monday may be a problem. It's supposed to rain Tuesday.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's the thing, we're up to plant by year. If it's, if it's a, if it's hit and miss showers, you can still do asphalt, but if you gotta steady rain, you can't do.
Oh, okay, they're okay with hit and miss, okay.
Yeah, if you have hit and miss showers, you can, you can still.
Especially for the base.
Yeah.
With binder.
Okay. Any other questions before we get to the speed study? I'll tell you that Todd spent, um, all yesterday afternoon personally planting seventy plants at Miller Park in all the parking islands. And he took a vacation day to do it.
I had time to burn up.
So we have, what, like, it looked like a little more than seventy when I looked at it, cause.
Yeah, because what I did, some of them still had some of those perennials.
Oh, okay.
What I planted was native plants, and I, I tried to study them the best I could, made sure they were ones that like. Full sun, um, so we'll see what happens.
Paul Solomon, please.
Yep.
I was gonna say, Paul would be.
But we probably had.
Hold it, it wasn't trees then, was it?
No, no.
They said they're native.
Only fifty percent, please.
Um, it was probably, cause we had some butterfly bushes, some other things that were there that, that came back, but I, that was probably ten.
Well, butterfly bushes, I'm surprised how late they bloom, come, start blooming.
You know why? See, butterfly bushes grow pretty well, and they, not all of them are doing real well in those islands.
Sure, he's still haven't started blooming yet.
That is late, yeah.
Well, thank you for doing that.
Oh, you're welcome. I call it, uh, my ment- I called it a mental health thing. That's therapy to me, get out and play in the dirt.
I was up there today, cause I wanted to see it. I did have to plant one. I said, seventy plants, you missed one, but that's pretty good average.
Well, at least you saved that, thank you.
But there were, um, they were playing bocce ball. There were seventy-five people playing bocce ball this Wednesday. It's always a big crowd there. And it was like fifty-some cars there, but, but, um, they've been playing there for two or three years, every Wednesday.
What is bocce ball?
Where the Italian game where you roll the balls and guys try to get it close to the.
Oh.
Yeah, so they rope off like about six or seven, I think about ten courts. You know, so they can all play at the same time. The wives come and watch, yeah, it's a, I mean, they, they, uh, it's good to see that. They have a good time.
No, we look for gambling, uh, is it?
Uh, no, I don't think with, it's an older group, so they probably don't have the money to gamble. But, but it was nice to see it, um, nice to see it used. There are times where there are a lot of people, I think the, um. Tot lots are getting a lot of use, the playgrounds.
Playground.
Well, I've seen this one out here gets quite a bit of it.
Yep.
Cause I came by out here today, and there was someone pulling in, there was people down there.
People eat lunch there every day. When you're here, you see people that eat lunch.
Summer months, you definitely almost see someone.
Well, this was probably ten o'clock, there was people down there already.
Yeah, bring their kids up to play, yeah. And I did notice that all, I guess they're using them, all the grills had. The trace of ashes in them, so I don't, I guess people were taking them away or else we're emptying them, I don't know. But you could tell they had been used, but there wasn't much collected in them, but they had all been used. And Brian said he's seen people playing corn. That was kinda neat, used a mailbox to put the, uh, cornhole. Things in, that, that's a nice receptacle. That was a good idea. Just turned it on its side and you open it up and. They reach in and grab the, the cornhole, whatever you call the things you throw.
Beanbag bags.
Beanbags, yeah. We, so it's just a mailbox but sitting vertically.
They just open it, the mail, you know, like a rural mailbox.
Right.
Yeah, so whoever had that idea was a good one, or well.
I do think they talked about it, but.
All right, you wanna talk about the speed study?
Yeah, uh, just give you a quick update here. Um, we did the first six weeks, leaving them sit, uh, where they initially were placed. Ryan and Demi were with Chester Bay, correct, or Monday?
Today.
Today, okay. Today they moved it to the, uh, yeah, this week, this week they moved, moved the, uh.
I didn't think it would move this morning when I went by.
South, southwest bound, which is coming up the hill. Was moved above, uh, toward the top of the hill to capture speed.
But, but this, where it was is the important speed, cause that's, was her porch. That's what the speed would be going by her house.
Right, right, yes. So we'll do that for, uh, additional six weeks, but as you can see, um. On the, uh, the top of the north, northeast, which is the downhill speeds. You know, you have about seventy-nine percent at the speed limit or below, and about twenty-one percent that are over. And that's out of just about fifty-eight thousand vehicles. We had the four highest speeds clocked were between fifty-six and sixty. And again, you know, that's definitely too fast without any question.
But amazing that it was.
That being out of, you know, fifty-eight thousand vehicles.
There was three of them.
And then on the southwestbound lane, which is heading toward Toner Road, which is the coming up the hill. You can see, you had ninety-nine percent of those vehicles were at the speed limit or below, and then. One percent was, was over the speed limit, um, which was, uh, three hundred and ten cars out of fifty-two thousand.
It's just really hard to run up that hill.
Yeah.
Well, uh, with where the sign, no, I mean, I understand why it's where it's at, but where it's at, you're not gonna.
Yeah, so we'll, where it moved now will give us a true reading of what's actually passing the front of her home.
Statistically, with these numbers, there's nothing we could present to the state police or to the.
I mean, it's.
And say, here's a problem because.
It's not a problem.
Yep, this.
Based on this.
Right.
I mean, I came down over there recently, and, and I, I mean, I don't even think I was over the speed limit at all. Because it's so steep that you tend to break.
Alright.
Okay.
Good, I mean, it's, it's, are you gonna wait till you've done the other one to share the results with?
I think we should.
Yeah. I think that makes sense, okay. Okay, I mean, that it for you, Todd?
Yes.
So we have on the engineer's report. The only question I have is, do we know the identity of the person who damaged the bridge?
No.
No. If we did, I assume we would be going after them.
Correct, yeah.
So, that just hit and run.
We have no, yeah, we have no idea.
Okay, wondered that.
It was just, I don't.
Is it a big re- is it a big repair job?
I, I don't think it's gonna be real bad, but it's gonna have to be addressed.
Is that right near Deer Creek?
Yes.
It's on Shrewsbury side, huh?
Church Road, yes.
Can we turn it around? Anybody have any other questions on the Davidson report? We have the Recreation Commission report. Any questions from anybody? Uh, nothing on fire and EMS. You do have a report from Stan. Um, emergency management.
Yeah, he just emailed that to us today, so I apologize, you didn't have it sooner.
I think it's pretty much self-explanatory from what I saw. Wherever I put it.
Everybody has that, am I right?
This one?
Yep. Yep. Anybody have any questions on it? Okay, thanks. Um, you have the Planning Commission's only hearing board report. Again, the, um, ad hoc committee on short-term rentals, you've seen the results of that. Uh, the sewer committee did meet on, uh, May the twentieth, and I think Todd, you might have. Some information to kinda walk through on that.
Correct, uh, yeah, you'll see on your screen, plus there's also.
Ah, there you go.
In your packet. Let me enlarge this a little bit, we can see what's going on with the world as they say. This is a list that we started out with, um, the property owners who had access. Or unused, I should say, uh, not necessarily access. Sewer EDUs, uh, and you can just see there, you know, I'm not, won't go through all these, but Sky King had five. They kept wanting to transfer four over to that Powers and Almody subdivision, there in the corner of Toner and Keeny. Shrewsbury Commons, um, they had sixty, eighty-seven, I'm sorry. Twenty of those went to that Laricena, which is the corner of Toner and Mount Airy, the senior living development. And then this, uh, Tevin Holdings. They already had eighteen, and. Tevin Holdings is the owner of the Laricena land development. So those twenty that were transferred from Shrewsbury Commons, uh, goes out by Laricena subdivision. And then all these others here, you know, Hans Organics, um, you know, we were hoping the rest stop could, could maybe. Give up ten, but from what I understand, Penn Dot's doing an evaluation and they're looking at, uh, enlarging the rest stop there. And actually, potentially moving it south, relocating it.
Oh. Relocating.
Is what they're, that, they're exploring.
South.
That's all farmland, isn't it?
I have no idea. Can't, that part I can't answer, but.
There's, there's wooded area, directly south with the rest. It's far more wo- wooded, most everything. Yeah, wood, and then you got, uh, farmland right there at the, at the line. That's strange to me, but alright.
Well, I don't know how.
Cause they can't, not much room to expand it.
They get that much traffic in there.
Well, I think the problem is.
A lot of truck traffic.
It's all the trucks that park.
Yeah, yeah, it's a lot of truck traffic overnight.
Yep.
And they're backed up onto the road.
But some of the times, I think, there's more parking there than you realize, but I think they're afraid to pull up because if there is no parking.
They can't. Then they can't stop, yeah.
They can't stop. So anyway, according to, um, York County Planning Commission and their transportation group, they're. Reviewing now whether to try to see if they can expand or remove it, and likely to move it south. So.
There they gotta find a buyer.
So that's why they won't give up.
Yeah, but at the same time, we gotta find a buyer.
Yep.
Or someone else.
Well, they're exploring, that, that's basically what they said they're doing, they're just exploring.
It's gotta have a, like an off-ramp, on-ramp, distance.
Well, and I, you know, they just started exploring what they want to do, and if they move further south, they're gonna run into a big problem. Cause they won't have, unless they're willing to run a really, really long trump line, they're not gonna have public sewer access.
So they're exploring, that's, that's the word they use.
Yep, um, then just like, uh, Spirit Trust Lutheran, uh, I know they were entertaining the idea of maybe building some additional cottages. So they're not willing to give anything up. Isher Lodging has two parcels there for a total of ten. That's at the very top of Caprice Court. Above Sky King.
Where the hotel was.
Correct, yeah, they have a plan approved for a hotel, and ten wouldn't be enough anyway. Um, Course Grace Fellowship Church, you know, we, we dealt with them when the nineteen went over to. The borough and the, and the township's nineteen went to the, uh, Hillwood. Audi, uh, they're gonna need, I'm sure, all five of theirs. Royal Farms, um, they're, they're utilizing their three.
Yeah, I don't think we can give any up.
Yeah, um, Deller, that's a property, uh, they're not hooked to sewer now, but, so they're gonna have to keep an EDU. That's the one right there at, uh, that old garage on eight fifty-one at Sadler's Church Road.
Bob Wilson's.
Yes. And then, uh, Shrewsbury Commons Joint Venture, talked to them, hoping we could, uh, but the, they. They're the ones that are building the smaller warehouse on L Drive. And they don't know how many they're going to need for now, so they're not willing to give any up at this point in time. So Shrewsbury Commons, um, I, I, I talked to one of the, uh, managing members and. He indicated to me that they could potentially have up to maybe fifteen or so, that they would be willing to sell privately.
At a pretty high.
So at least if someone comes to us, we can, you know, we send them and if they can negotiate a deal or whatever. But apparently they purchased when they were pretty high, so of course they're gonna recoup their cost, but.
The ones they sold to, um, the Travis Holdings, they were twenty thousand or more.
I think they were twenty, I'm wondering if that, yeah.
So, they've got almost, um, I don't know what they paid for the ones before that, but they could have almost a million dollars in sewer EDUs on that site.
So anyway, this was the first step that the Shrewsbury Borough had asked us to go through. See what, what we could potentially get back from those that had some unused EDUs. The other thing we looked at here quickly was, um. Our future needs, the committee looked at that. We, we made a couple little minor alterations to that.
Todd?
Yes.
Presidential Heights, is that the, um, the Shrewsbury Commons? That's the one with a hundred and fifty some homes proposed?
Yeah, that would be on the south side of, of Shrewsbury Commons Shopping Center.
Across, across from where I am.
Right, is that? Are the, are these the same thing?
No, Shrewsbury Commons is the shopping center itself.
Oh, okay.
That whole area was called Presidential Heights. Where I am, where the, um, townhouses and all, down at the railroad tracks, all that was called Presidential Heights. So all the Anderson property, that's what that is, Shrewsbury Commons near that, that was all called Presidential Heights.
So the, these first, uh, three have been satisfied, so that's why I don't show up as total EDUs needed, but they were on our original list. Uh, Wendy Hill, which is Barry Matthews, a plan we see floating around here, Sussex Place, they have the last phase. So for twenty-five, we're thinking we would probably need twenty-three. Two thousand twenty-six, potentially forty. And then, you know, twenty-seven and twenty-eight, uh, for Presidential Heights.
Where do those come from, those forties?
That's probably we'll have them.
Okay, I didn't know.
Yeah, yeah.
They were gonna be made up or what?
And then I also have reached out to the Pennsylvania Rural Water Association, cause when we met with Shrewsbury Borough, we talked about maybe. Creating a, a joint sewer authority, so that there was some representation, it would still. You know, have representation over from Shrewsbury Borough, cause they'd still have to work closely with Shrewsbury Borough to transport the flows through their system. So I'm, I'm gathering some information on that before we meet with them again, and, uh, so that's kinda where we're at right now.
First step.
Yeah. Long, long process, but.
Tough, tough to find any out there for sure. Okay, I guess that brings us to supervisors' comments, so you have my report and, um. The only thing I would note, well, until I get to the LGAC newsletter, that's something I wanna refer to. So are there comments from any other supervisors?
Just, just congratulations to Bob.
May twentieth, I worked at the polls, helping candidates out. And I'm gonna be, uh, volunteering at the Shrewsbury Fire Department Carnival.
Yeah, they were looking for help on Wednesday.
That's what I'm gonna do.
For anybody that could help, or, uh, bingo. So, anybody's around and doesn't know anything to do, they can use bingo hall help.
I'm planning on being there.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, I've got a comment. I ran into some residents of the township earlier this weekend. They're on Glenview, Glenview, down in Glen Rock, and they're questioning the alley between. Glenview and what's below that, uh, Todd, do you remember? They're about a VFW.
Yeah, I know where you mean.
Okay.
I think that gentleman called me, was it about the, that unnamed alley breaking up?
Yeah, did they call you?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, then I'm, I'm done. As long as they called you.
Yeah, he called me, I said, we'll take a look at it, I guess it was about garbage trucks and whatever, and it started to break up the asphalt a little bit.
Right, and he's questioning who's responsible and. Cause I was.
I actually just spoke to him today.
Okay.
Is that not a private alley then?
No, he says not.
Yeah.
He said Glen Rock Borough plows. He said Glen Rock Borough plows it.
Probably wants to tear it up too.
In the township?
Huh?
It's in the township.
Well, I'm not sure where the township line is there. But I was questioned about it and I said, I'd bring it up, but I also recommended that they talk to Todd.
Yeah, I guess that's what they did. You did your job.
I, I thought it was the email we got earlier today, but that was Magnolia and Wendy Hill. Never mind.
Yeah.
No, this is Glenview Glen Rock.
I got you.
I thought had some other question about an alley there, right?
Well, that was over for other.
That was, that was up like a block or so. That's that one where we determined it was never dedicated.
Right.
Right.
Ren, that was ren, ren.
Well, see, that's what happened is he brought up about this alley to me and it's like, hold it, what alley are you talking about because?
Right.
And then he was telling, right behind his house and everything. I looked at you, when I went by then later on that day, you could see where there's some stone built up and so forth. It towards his grass, his, your, his lot, you know? But he said is what's happening is because something's happened with the curbing or the. The curbing that's there on Glenview from the garbage trucks. That it's now going down that way in the alley versus following the street out.
I believe, yeah, he lives right.
He lives right there.
This, this is the old Wetzel's.
You're right.
And this is, this is then heading out of Glen Rock.
Right. He lives right there. And the alley is right behind his house there.
And he, he's referring to this alley here.
Right.
And I, I don't know if that's a named alley or not. We're gonna find out. But, yeah, cause now that one's in the township, that one's in the township. Yeah, these are all the townships, so.
Okay.
Alley has to be.
Yeah, but these, these might.
That's probably borough there.
Yeah, these are boroughs.
Yeah.
And this is township.
See the line right down the middle of the street where it's cracked?
It's one of them weird areas.
Yeah.
But he said Glen Rock Borough plows that in the winter.
Good.
But I did get that, I did get that call and I did speak.
Do we have an intergovernmental agreement?
We will check. We'll check it out, see what we can find.
Alright, I'm fine then.
Anything else, supervisors? Alright, I guess that, I guess we threw this in with supervisor's comment. It's probably later in your packet under communication, but. There's another, I guess, effort by fellows in Harrisburg to pass legislation that would essentially. Give to the state the power to dictate to municipalities where they have to allow any. Power grid like solar farms or things like that, that, that they would supersede our zoning to do that.
Seven man committee, just pick out a spot.
Yep, yep, a seven man committee would say.
The governor will name the committee, he'll name the committee and then they'll tell you where the spot's gonna be.
Yep.
That, that seems problematic.
So.
I agree.
Um, I did, assuming the board is favorable, I did already this afternoon write. Letters that would go to Kate and Phillips Hill and also to the governor this time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll cover PSAT, so I assume we'll move forward with that. That's, you know, that's probably worse than the other when we protested. I mean, you could, you know, you could just. They, they dictate where it goes.
Pick the spot.
Yep. I'll have to tell them real quick, pick the spots where two warehouses are supposed to go.
That's not right.
I still say those warehouses should put solar on the roof and that.
Agreed. And you know, I've mentioned that to people, you know, as far as talking solar and stuff there. And everybody says, what about all these warehouses? What about all these complexes? Why not put it there instead of on ag ground? Because there, cause there's people complaining about the one down here in Maryland.
Oh, yeah, that one.
Bob brought up.
Off Oakland Road?
Yeah, there's people, I've heard a lot of complaints about that.
Yeah, it looks horrible.
And everybody's like, well, why not put it on roofs?
Well, both the warehouses, what I guess supposedly they are built.
Built for it.
Built to hold it, but then it's who puts it on there.
Right.
So there, there's a lot of restrictions for residential as far as how much you can put on.
Well, yeah.
And, and it, it can't be more than what you're currently using or a certain percentage of it.
Right, well, I've got, I've got it on my place. It's not active yet.
They did.
My place.
It would exempt anything zone residential, so they couldn't put it there, but they could put it on any farm.
Well, I'm at, I mean, at my farm.
But you're for your own use.
It's for my own use, but it's on the roof. Now, but they won't, they, I said about putting more on and they wouldn't put any more on.
Yeah, that, that's, that's what I'm saying, cause it, it, it has to be a certain percentage of what your, your annual usage is.
They will not do more.
Otherwise you'd be able to make more money on it by selling it, selling it back, which if, if, if the goal is more energy. Why are they against you, you know, having more on your property and whatever else? I, I, I don't fully understand the whole thing.
They wanna put these solar farms.
Yeah, and grid scale means the big solar farm.
But, but my, my guess is, I could be wrong, but my guess is they plan to rent the land. So that way they can take all of the profits from actual solar. But I, I doubt the, the property owner gets any of that.
Then just get the ground rent.
Yeah, yeah. But the property owner couldn't put it on there if he wanted to.
Right.
So it. I'm sorry, does anybody else see the problem with that?
But I'll, I'll ask Todd to put copies of the letters in our, the next packet, so you can all have copies of it. And PSATs is extremely active. In fact, this came from PSATs to tell us about it, so. I guess, Todd, that brings us to old business and the comp plan.
Yeah, just a quick update. You have a copy in your packet there, the comprehensive plan adoption schedule. We've been through the community planning commission elected official meetings during the month of May for Shrewsbury Township and the four boroughs. Their governing bodies all took action to authorize the comprehensive plan to go to York County Planning Commission for their review and comment. And we should receive those comments back from county planning on July fifteenth. And if anything goes well, we're looking at adoption of the new comp plan in the month of August. So just want to let you know where we're at in the process.
We basically.
That has to be approved by all municipalities then, correct?
Correct.
So we basically have two months to just wait for that. Unless, I don't know if we'll see it at the LGAC this month or not, but.
No, you'll probably see it in July at least.
Yeah, that's what I would think. Okay, under new business. We have a couple of things we need to work on now. One is just approval of this Autumn Dash. Is it the same? I think it's the same.
Same route, same, yeah. Nothing's changed.
Okay.
They've got people on the trail letting people know.
Correct. They're, they're responsible for the, the traffic.
Do we shut down a lane for that or?
In the past, they have not totally shut down lanes.
Okay.
But, but they had traffic control to make sure they were traveling.
They've done it three years, this is the fourth?
Yes.
I'm making a motion to approve the fourth annual Autumn Dash for the YMCA five K.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
I have a motion and a second. Questions? We'll vote.
Aye.
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 Five votes to the affirmative. We have approved the Autumn Dash. And next is to authorize a couple advertisements for bids, Todd?
Yeah, again, plant in your packet a schedule to, for, to complete the site improvements for Hayntown Park and Wendy Hill Park. Both of these projects at the parks will be bid as one contract.
Okay.
Better pricing. So the, what we're looking for tonight is authorization from the board to put this out for bid in, in late June.
So moved?
Second.
And so Wendy Hill, this is the pavilion.
Correct.
And for, for Hayntown, it's some new playground equipment, take out the volleyball.
Yes, correct.
Put in some more landscaping and things like that.
Yep, doubling, doubling the size of the playground.
Thank you. Playground improvements, Todd. The playground equipment that we have at. It'll come to me, I'm sorry.
Not Hayntown, not by here.
Wendy Hill or Miller? At Miller Park. Isn't overly kid friendly to younger children, which is my experience at, at that park?
With the two different lots?
It, it's like one's for like really small children and one's like a trapeze artist. There's really no middle ground. So I'm just, I'm curious what the approval process is gonna be as far as what type of playground equipment we're putting in there. Are we gonna get a, a look at that? Are we gonna be able to see different options?
Yeah, we can, we can get that from Ann.
Okay.
We sat down, Ryan and I, with Ann and looked at what was proposed, but we'll get a copy. I'll make sure everyone gets it.
Okay.
So if we need to make any changes.
That'd be lovely. Especially to have a variety of children's or children's age, what do you, at the different parts too.
And I'm not an expert in, in the recreation field there, but I do know the equipment is. You know, it's kinda like all the toys, you know, ages six and up or whatever. Playground equipment's pretty much the same, designated age groups. And that's why you'll see like a tot lot and the age limits and that corresponds with the equipment. They don't. We don't, when I say we or consult or whoever, they don't just say, oh, I think that'll fall over here or whatever. They have to go by what's.
Of course.
Yeah, it's Ryan, the catalog's about this thing. It's crazy what's out there.
A couple of different options could, could, could be beneficial, yeah.
Yeah, so could, they're let us, we'll, we'll get a copy of that and we'll get that sent out to you.
Thank you.
Yep.
I think we did have a motion, cause I asked the question.
You did, you did. Your motion is second and I had a question in the beginning.
Yep, that's good, no problem. Any other questions?
Uh, that, that motion was to advertise.
Yes.
And is that one bid, Todd, or two?
One.
One.
One bid, thank you.
One bid, yes.
Okay, so.
Did you wanna vote?
Yep.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Five votes to the affirmative.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I stole your thunder.
No, you're fine. No problem.
It was a long question.
We're all together here.
As a concerned citizen, as well as a member of the board, I just wanna make sure that we're, you know, appealing to all age groups. And we're not, you know, sending children to the hospital for, you know, an ER visit, cause they were on the trapeze artist's side instead of the tot lot.
Just for a point of clarification.
I'm gonna start timing it.
Art made the motion?
No.
I did.
Okay.
Jeff made the motion?
Bob seconded it.
It came from that side of the table. I wasn't paying attention.
Yep.
Imagine that.
Right.
I heard that. I heard that.
Got him, Todd?
Yes.
Okay, so our work continues. This would be the appointment of an alternate sewage enforcement officer. This is Tate Hunnings, who is Keith Hunnings' son. Who is working with Keith now.
Talk to him on the phone.
And we are supposed to, we're under DEP, we are supposed to have an alternate. We do not currently.
Oh, really? And is, is that the event, that Keith's busy on vacation, something, and is not just gonna sit?
If there's no alternate, right?
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Right, 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 okay.
Sorry, I'm. I'm done.
I'll make a motion to appoint Tate Hunnings as the alternate.
Second. Oh, Jeff got me on that one. He was, he was Johnny on the spot.
That was close.
That was louder.
Todd, just before we vote, I assume you're recommending this too?
Yeah, I, I think, I think he's, I think he'll be fine.
Just want to make sure. Alright, any other questions? We'll vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
We now have a alternate sewage enforcement officer. Okay, we've got a couple more here. One is a security camera proposal. And you have a replacement quote, I think, on your desk because the prices already went up.
Goodness. It doubled.
No, you're reverse the order, I, or no?
The, the new one doubled.
No, they went up about fifteen percent.
Wow, what am I looking at here?
You have two of them there.
Yeah, I've got a.
Oh, my apologies. I didn't dig far enough.
I'm gonna let Ryan talk a little bit about it because he worked with the, the contractor. I, I didn't, so.
So we dealt with the same contractor that did this building here with the security cameras and security system and we've been, I think, pretty happy with it so far. So I wanna give him a chance to do this at our parks. So the one here at Hayntown is actually gonna piggyback off of our system here. So he's gonna be able to use like the DVR, that kinda stuff that's already in place here.
That's the cheaper option, current, or the cheaper bid?
That's the cheaper bid, yeah. Yeah, it's for Hayntown Park, cause again, he can use a lot of the same equipment. He, when we put this in. He kinda made it so that if we did something down there, it had the room to add to it. And then the one at Wendy Hill was obviously a lot more, cause he's gotta put in a DVR system. I think there's also double the amount of cameras, yeah? Double the amount of cameras and again DVR system, more wiring, so that's why that one's quite a bit more. If you read the email, we do have to do some work in the township as far as running conduit for him to put his wires in. That kinda stuff and use of the bucket truck.
Something to feel mention about who we have now at Wendy Hill and some of the issues we've had.
Oh, yeah, so Wendy Hill, we do have. Eight? Yeah, I think it's eight ring motion activated cameras. The issue that we've been finding with all these motion activated ones is that it's not really capturing what. We need to capture. It's not capturing the whole thing.
It's turning on after.
Pretty, yeah, it's pretty much too late. Yeah. So these are twenty-four, seven, running off of power there.
Yeah, they, they, they're, they're very clear.
Yes, yeah, they're very clear.
Strong resolution?
Yep.
How, how long of the recording?
Weekend.
Depending on the size of your hard drive, I would imagine.
Correct.
Roughly, I mean, are, are we good for a month?
He usually tries to do about twenty days, twenty to thirty days. Now, this one, I think we're getting. He, like, at least thirty, I think, out of, now that'll go down when he adds these down here, cause he's adding more cameras, taking up more storage space.
Okay.
But I don't think we'll ever dip below twenty, cause I think he's only adding four down there. Yeah, looks like just four, so I don't think we'll dip below twenty days.
Okay.
Again, we can always add hard drives to it to extend the recording time, but typically if we don't notice something in twenty days.
Soon enough and be able to save or secure what you need.
Sort of like here, if we don't notice something in five days.
We, we, we have had some incidents down at Wendy Hill Park and that's what prompted us to look into this.
Dumping mainly.
Well, one, yeah, dumping, but there was one incident with some vandalism with a suspected theft out of a car.
Yes.
Okay.
And they didn't capture.
And the cameras did not capture that activity. They, they would, it, it's strange. There's ring cameras. You, you'll see a vehicle come around and it'll start recording and then it just stops. So every one of the incidents that we tried to look to see what happened.
None.
It wasn't there. Everything else in between.
Is there a explanation as to the cost increase in a three week window?
I can tell you exactly what he sent me. Yesterday, pretty much my distributor came back with a price increase on the cameras and it will be affected in the current quote. So his cameras just went up exponentially.
There, he doesn't have any other options. It's the only distributor.
Yes, yes, that's the only distributor. Obviously, there's different options in the cameras. Quality, you know, quality wise, they go all the way up to thousands of dollars if they beam out so far and.
Okay.
Can see very clear.
And where were we? Six, six and change, three and change?
Are the quotes independent of each other? In other words, can you do just?
Yes. Yes.
They're standalone?
Yes. Yeah, one doesn't affect the other, at least as far as I know, but I don't see any reason why one would affect the other.
So we can look at it proven one or, one or, or both?
Yeah, we do, we looked today. We have fifteen thousand dollars in for rec complex expenditures, so. Yeah, and we haven't spent anything in to date. We were doing these, eventually we wanna do Miller Park also. Miller Park is gonna be a bear to conquer. We gotta get electric there. And it's gonna be very costly and very, I think, labor intensive. We gotta run conduit, but not just on the building, but underground. It's also a much bigger park and we're trying to see what happens with this land. Yeah, trying to make it so that hopefully. Yeah, trying to make it so that hopefully we only gotta do stuff once instead of.
Right.
Now, obviously, if we get the land, we might have to add stuff to that land down the road.
Right.
But, yeah, we're trying to see what happens.
Capability to do it.
Correct.
What's the total here, ten, five? You said we budgeted fifteen?
Six, yeah, ten, six is what I added up.
I didn't break my calculator out, I was guessing, I'm sorry, it wasn't exact.
Ryan mentioned, we have a, a line item budget for fifteen thousand for rec, uh, complex expenditures.
Do we have any other complex expenditures on the horizon that you could foresee?
The only thing, it was the one bench repair, which was twenty-five hundred. Or a new bench, I should say.
Is, is that why a bench is missing on the trail?
Yeah, a tree.
Oh, a tree fell on it?
Course, right in the middle of it, across the back.
Goodness.
And the tree won.
Uh, I, I make a motion to approve the, um, security camera proposal for both Hayntown and Wendy Hill Parks, totaling roughly ten thousand six hundred dollars in budgeted expenditures.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, questions? Call for the bid, call for the quote.
I'm sorry, aye.
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 Five votes to the affirmative, so we have approved both quotes for cameras.
Bid, yes.
Guess we better get that to them quick before the price goes up.
Yeah, I'm gonna let them know, probably actually right now.
Lock it in. Standard stormwater treatment, Chairman?
Yep.
It is?
Uh, make a motion to approve stormwater operation and maintenance agreement for a four-milled lane.
Second.
Thank you.
I have a motion and a second to approve the stormwater agreement, question, we'll vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Five votes to the affirmative, the stormwater agreement is approved. That leaves us with correspondence, we have several thank you letters from, uh, some of the people we made donations to.
Dispersed some donations?
Yes, and you have the LGAC newsletter.
You wanted to say something about that, didn't you?
Yeah, the only thing I would point out, the last page is the, uh, York County Community Survey. So, they're making a push to try to get better participation in the, uh, last couple of weeks, I think that closes June twenty-second. It's a fairly long survey, um, but they're putting a lot of, I guess, use to that survey and some of the things the county looks to do going forward. I have, I have completed one, but, um, I would say if you have the time, it would probably be well worth it to complete it, but it will take a little bit of time.
Now, wh- what's that in reference to? Wha- what's the survey in reference to?
The survey goes through all kind of quality of life issues and things like that in York County. Kinda does it in preferences, or things you prefer, or would like to do, would like to see. I mean, it, it covers about, it covers like transportation, housing, and a whole host of things. So, um, if you look at the one, it's healthcare, transportation, education, childcare, employment, housing, food security, and, uh, gen- general demographic questions. So, you know, it'll ask you, give you a lot of choices, would you like to see this, or this, or this? And so far, they've got fourteen hundred responses. And you can see they come from more populated areas when you look at the breakdown.
But when they're the only ones responding.
Yep.
They're, they're the ones that are getting the preferences.
If, if we don't, we don't show our side on it.
Uh, can we get anything out to our residents in the timeframe before that's expired?
I don't know if it's ever been anything that went out on the Savvy Citizen or not, I, I know that all.
I mean, obviously, it's not gonna make the newsletter.
Citizen, we can do it on the website, I think.
I know York County has.
It's only open for another, what, two and a half weeks?
I know York County has publicized it in a lot of different ways, so I don't know how they did that.
Could, could we send a text, text blurb out?
Yeah, we'll do a Savvy Citizen, we can do the, uh, website, and we can also do the Facebook page.
That'll be good, and just, uh, uh, how, how much space do we have to accompany that, when we're sending out the, the message?
The Savvy, Savvy?
Yeah.
I mean, you have a good bit, the thing is with Savvy Citizen, it is, most people don't wanna sit and wanna read a whole lot through that, you know?
Valid point.
So, we try to make it as brief as we can to capture their attention, and, and we can then, we can include a link, though.
Okay.